All right. Board members, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to this work session of the Orange County School Board. We're here today, of course, for our school impact fee study update. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Dr. Jarrah, who's pinch hitting for Dr. Jenkins today, and then I'm sure he'll turn it over to our impact fee study committee and our representative from Tindell Oliver. But, Dr. Jarrah.
Thank you, Chair.
Let me say this, too, before you go on, Dr. Jarrah, forgive me. Board members, as you know, we take public comment at all our work sessions now. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through the report. I'd like, please, board members, for everybody, if you'll indulge me, to wait until after the report and presentation is done before we entertain any questions. And at that point, I'll do one of two things. If I have anybody who wants to speak, I'll either go directly to them. So if you intend to speak today and you'd like to address the school board on the issue of the impact fee study update, please get a yellow speaker card from -- who's over there? Is it Mr. Morgan?
Sir.
Joseph. From Joseph, over here at the far left-hand side of the dais, and I'll call you to speak at that time. Board members, if you have any questions about the presentation itself, I may take those before we go to the speakers. But let's hold our comments and our discussion until after we hear from anybody who chooses to speak, if anybody at all. Okay? Dr. Jarrah.
Thank you, Chairman, and I'll quickly turn it over to our Director of People Assignment, Dr. Carol McGowan.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. This evening, I'm here to introduce our two staff members, who have been the most responsible for working on this with our school impact fee study. And we all know Ms. Fernandez, sitting at the far end, and Julie Salvo next to me, who will introduce all of our consultants, who will be doing our presentation, and the folks that are with us in the audience, who are part of the committee. But again, I want to thank both Julie and Eileen for heading this up and doing such a wonderful job.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Just a quick overview. The Orange County Code requires a review of the school impact fee study every four years. And our last impact fee study took place in 2010, 2011, and the new rates took effect in 2011. So now, here we are, four years later. Last summer, we initiated our review and hired our consultants, Tindell Oliver, and they're leading us through this process. An integral part of the process is the School Impact Fee Advisory Group. And the group has seven members, three of whom were appointed by the school board, and three by Orange County, and one by the Greater Orlando Builders Association. The group has met monthly since last fall to review the consultants' work and the impact fee methodology. They're scheduled to meet again in February to finalize their recommendations. We have a couple members of our advisory group here. If I could just ask them quickly to stand. I'm going to introduce you. The Chair of the Committee is Ms. Miranda Fitzgerald. We also have Christine Vermucci and Dottie Nguyen.
Before we go further, this is one of those below-the-radar, thankless tasks that nobody in the community recognizes, that we know takes a lot of time and quite a commitment to public education. So Ms. Vermucci, thank you. Ms. Nguyen, thank you. Ms. Fitzgerald, thank you so much for your service. And if you could pass our thanks on to the rest of the committee, we really do appreciate your service. I know I speak for the whole board when I say that, so thank you.
I also just wanted to quickly recognize a few OCPS staff members that have been very heavily involved in this work. Jessma Lambert and Judith Padres, they have been really, really helpful, providing all the data, all the spreadsheets for the consultants to review. And of course, Eileen Fernandez. And finally, before I turn this over to our consultants, I wanted to thank the staff at Orange County. They've been responsible for setting up all the meetings, organizing everything, taking meeting minutes, all the really fun stuff. So we have a couple Orange County people here, Brandy Diggers, Whitney Evers. They've been really great to work with. We really appreciate all their help. And just so you know, before -- after the consultants done with their presentation, I wanted to give you all a quick update on the CEA and concurrency, sort of the annual report that we've been giving on all the revenues that we've been collecting and where that money is going. And that's just going to be a really quick overview. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tindell Oliver. This is -- let them guys can do your introductions. Steve, may I turn on your microphone?
It's on, I think. Good afternoon. I'm Negan Kemp with Tindell Oliver.
Hi, I'm Steve Tindell with Tindell Oliver.
And we'll do the presentation together. Basically, we'll go through a brief background and then go through the findings of the study. And as Julie mentioned last, technical study was updated in 2011, and this is the every-four-year update, routine update of the study. And again, School Impact Fee Advisory Group was formed in 2005, has seven members, and the purpose is to review the methodology and the development of the fee. And this is the list of the current members. And this is a quick study schedule, just to give you a sense where we are. We started the study in August and completed about four meetings with the advisory group. And then after today, we have two more meetings with them. And then the study goes through the review committees, Development Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, and all the way to the County Commission. In terms of findings, we are using a consumption-based methodology, which is also the current adopted methodology. And it basically charges growth for the value of consuming school capacity. And this is our basic impact fee formula. And the cost looks at the value of the school buildings, buses, and any kind of capital asset per student. From that, we subtract any estimated future contributions from new development in terms of non-impact fee sources, taxes, and so on. And this net cost gets multiplied by demand, which is measured in terms of student generation rate per home type. So this is sort of a snapshot of the final results. So right now, the calculated fee, this is the -- what we are presenting is still draft, but it's right around $8,400 for single-family. And current fee is at $6,500. So that would be about almost 30 percent increase. The current calculated fee is still lower than what the fees were in 2007, which were about almost $12,000. So that's -- and then you can see for the other land uses as well, there's a range of anywhere from 30 to almost 68 percent increase. And we're going to go through that for the reasons of some of this variation. So the elements of the fee involves, starting with the inventory. This is, again, all the schools own today, any buses, any kind of capital asset that the school board owns to provide service. We look at the service delivery in terms of the design of the buildings, you know, what type of buildings you are constructing. Cost looks at the value of the buildings in terms of, if you were to build them today, what would it cost? The current value of the assets. And then credit, again, looks at how the school district is funding capacity projects and recognizes any tax contributions from future development, so that we are not charging them twice for the same asset. And then the generation rate, again, is looking at how many students per home. So the inventory includes traditional schools only. So it excludes charter schools, private schools, technical alternative schools. It looks at the permanent stations, permanent square footage. It does not charge for portables, even though they are used routinely. And again, everything looks at the permanent fish capacity. In terms of the cost elements, it's all costs necessary to build schools. So it's from construction, design, furniture, fixture equipment, land. So we take into account all the components that are needed to build a school. In estimating the construction costs, we reviewed the historical projects, what the school district paid, any bids, any estimates, insurance values of the existing buildings. And then that was supplemented with cost information from other jurisdictions to have a larger sample. So between 2009 and 2013, there were about 10 schools built. And then after our study, we also recently added two more schools. So it's really 12 schools. And these are the schools that were reviewed, for the most part. And for elementary schools, that elementary schools has the largest sample. So we were able to have better results from that. And it basically, it shows the 2007 study, and this chart kind of doesn't show the value, but hopefully, maybe yours do. But it was about $145 was used in 2007 study. And that was based on the bids at that time. Then by the time we did the 2011 study, that was dropped to $110 per square foot for the construction component. And then right around that time, you were actually building right about that value, like you can see, going from 2011, 2012, and so on. And toward 2013, and so this cost started to increase. And you built two new schools that are completed in 2015. They cost about $110 per square foot. A most recent bid for the site 117 is about $160. But then, you know, we have only one bid, and that's kind of reflecting the costs going up, and we are seeing it in other jurisdictions as well, as the economy is recovering and there's more competition. But we didn't feel comfortable using that bid as the value today, just because it may be outlier and so on. So we decided to use, for the study purposes, somewhere between what was built most recent and that bid. So we picked $135, which is the midpoint of $110 and $160 as for the construction element only of the elementary schools. So this is kind of -- this table summarizing pretty much all the data we reviewed. So the recent construction, elementary schools average, this is all the years, is about 104 or so. For middle, it's 150; high school is 153. In terms of bids, we have one bid for a new elementary. There's CIP estimates ranging 180 to 230. Insurance value is about 140 to 178. And insurance values, we usually review them as conservative just because they don't, you know, you don't have to have insurance for foundation or certain components are not included in those values. And then we look at other Florida jurisdictions, and they are ranging anywhere from 140 to 150, depending on the school level. So our estimates for Orange County today is about $135 for elementary, $155 for middle, and $175 for high school. So overall, the weighted average is about $153 for all schools. This chart shows the construction cost trends over longer term since 1995 in Florida. And you see that sort of abnormal period around, starting 2005, the costs are going up and then coming down. And that's what made our job really difficult, trying to figure out what it's going to cost to build a school. But the overall average that we come up with for this study, this $153, is right around the statewide average that we are seeing. So that makes us feel more comfortable that even when we look at a bigger sample, it appears to be a reasonable number for the impact fee purposes. This chart summarizes the changes in costs since, between 2007 study, '11 study, and current estimates. So the costs between 2007 and 2011 went down about 30 to 40 percent. And now they are coming back up about 30 to 35. But they are not still at the levels of 2007. So they are still lower than 2007, but higher than 2011 study levels. In addition to construction, we have other components, like the architectural design, site improvement, facility support, furniture, fixture equipment. For those, we look at, as a percentage of the construction costs. So when we look at the last schools, most recent schools built, architectural engineering design element is about 5 percent of construction. Site preparation is about 9 percent. Furniture fixture equipment is eight and a half. And facility support is about four and a half. And that's pretty consistent with the average of other Florida jurisdictions. So we sort of use pretty much those averages and come up with a total additional components at 27 percent. It's also consistent with what the other studies found. So in the 2007 study, our overall additional cost percentage was about 31 percent. In 2011 study, we had two different numbers, 31 for elementary, middle, and 27 for high schools. And this 2015 estimate is right around 27 percent of construction. So it seems to be the percentage relations remain pretty stable over time. For land value, we look at recent purchases. If there are any estimates, we look at that value of the existing parcels as estimated by the property appraiser. And then the vacant land sales and values in the county of the similar-sized parcels. So land purchases between 2008 and 2012 averaged about $100,000 per acre. Since we did the first draft, we received over the last few days additional parcels, and that average actually increased to about $160. But at least for now, we have that. So when we look at recent purchases, it's about now $160, but the range is 33 to 250. Current value of current parcels, these are the estimates provided by the property appraiser, and that tends to be on the conservative side, especially for, since school district doesn't pay taxes, they don't update as often. But that average is about $55,000. Future estimates for where the future parcels are going to be purchased is averaging about $375,000. And then we conducted vacant land sales and focused primarily on residential parcels, which tend to be lower than the others. And that averaged about $105,000. And then the vacant land values is $44,000 again. That's property appraisers estimate. So for our initial draft, we were saying, okay, county-wide sales is about $105,000, and the district's purchases are about 100. So we were using $100,000 per acre. Now, the average increased to $160. So we may, you know, by the time we issued the final report, we may have to make an adjustment. Just to give you an order of magnitude, though, land value makes up about maybe 10 percent of the total value. So if we increase that 100 to 150, the fee is only increasing about 5 percent. Just so you know, it's not a, it's not one of the major impacts. This chart, again, shows a comparison to the previous studies. In 2007, it was about $80,000. 2011, the estimate was 65, and this study is about 100 right now. Another component that goes into the calculation is the design standards. So we look at the prototype schools and look at the square footage per permanent student stations. So our cost per square foot gets multiplied with that. And these figures are based on, 2015 figures are based on what's in the CIP, what's going to be built next five years. And they are slightly lower than last study for elementary schools and slightly higher for middle and high schools.
Those numbers are below average, I believe, from statewide.
Yes, they are.
So you're constructing, I think, a little larger schools, and your per-square-foot per-station's, not significantly, but it's, you know, lower than other communities. So that affects the costs and brings it, actually brings it down because of the larger size and the design. You're actually bringing the cost per square foot down through that design, which is really good.
This chart basically takes the square footage and multiplies with the facility cost per square foot and come up with a total cost per student station. So for elementary schools, that gives us about almost $21,000. And then $27,000 for middle schools. And then the high schools are almost $32,000. And the weighted average, which is basically weighted by what the school district will build next five years, is about $26,000. Again, $26,000 is on the low end of the, for a student station for what just Steve explained. This chart compares the last two studies, and you'll see there was a decrease of almost 50 percent between 2007 and 2011 study. And now we are going up some to, by about 30 percent, sort of in between those two periods. Once we have the cost per station, we convert that to cost per student. And for that, we look at the enrollment in relation to permanent capacity. And so basically, if you have more capacity than enrollment, that suggests that school district is building more than one station per student. So that's, if that's the policy, we want to reflect cost to be the case. Alternatively, if you have, you don't have enough, you are only, so you are overcapacity, we don't want to charge one full station per student because you are not providing that. In the case of the county, the level of service standards are giving us, basically, the level of service standards are telling us what the intent is going forward. And they are giving us a more conservative fee compared to the actual level of service achieved right now. So one tells us what the investment was. The current achieved level of service tells us what the investment was by the community. And then the standard tells us what the intent is going forward. So we take the lower of the two, not to make sure that we are not overcharging. So we took, in this case, used the level of service standards, so the student station cost of $25,900 came down to $25,000, almost 300. So there's a slight decrease because of that. In addition to buildings, we have the transportation and ancillary facility costs. Those are the buses and white fleet, as well as the maintenance buildings and administrative buildings and so on. So they are right around $800, $840 per student. So total cost per student ends up being almost $27,000 between the building costs and the ancillary costs and transportation costs. In terms of credits, we look at how the school district funded capacity projects last five years, and then also how is it proposing to fund it in the CIP next five years. So the primary sources were the sales tax revenue, and then the ad valorem, and miscellaneous other smaller revenues. So altogether, in terms of cash expenditures, that resulted a credit of $368 per student per year. And then when we carry it throughout the life of the school 25 years and bring it back to present worth, it amounts to about $5,600 per student. We also look at the debt service. This is the outstanding cops, you know, with debt service still remaining, that were used to build capacity projects. So that gave us about $1,700. In all, in both cases, whenever there was an ad valorem tax used, we made an adjustment factor to recognize that new homes tend to pay a larger portion of the ad valorem tax than the average home. So the total credit per student is about $7,300. And compared to other studies, again, similar to the cost figures, the credit is less than what it was in '07 study, but more than what it was in the 2011 study. When you look at it in all studies, it's about 27 percent of the cost. That seemed to stay pretty consistent. So the net impact cost is basically the total cost minus the credit, and that comes to about almost $20,000. Then we looked at the student generation rates. School district provided a lot of the data analysis. But one thing we wanted to show, you are younger county. The average age, the largest age group is about 20s to 30 group. And that, the student generation rate reflects that as well. So you have a higher generation rate than what we see statewide. And that makes sense, given the demographics. This is, again, showing the trends over long time. This is all students, including charter and private. But you can see that Orange County outpaced Florida throughout, all the way going back to '80s and continues to be the case. Now, for just the traditional schools only, again, this chart shows the generation rates by home type. One thing we did differently in this study was, is that townhomes and multifamily were combined previously. We calculated a separate generation rate for townhouses because it seems to be their generation rate is different enough than multifamily that it may be worth evaluating whether to create a separate category. So far, the advisory group recommended creating a separate category for them. So we have the fees calculated that way. And that's the reason that you see that 68 percent increase, because before, townhouses were lumped together with multifamily, and that was kind of, they were paying, you know, under a lower generation rate. This is just kind of showing the trends in each category. This is the single-family homes. This is multifamily and mobile homes. And then this is all of the generation rate combined. So it seems like there was a dip, and then there's a slight increase. Finally, the calculated fee is basically, it takes the student generation rate, multiplies it with net cost. And we are coming up with about $8,400 for single-family. That's about 28 percent increase. Townhouses are about $6,600. That's the big increase in terms of percentage, 68 percent. Multifamily is at $5,600, about 44 percent increase. And then mobile homes is about $5,800 with a 33 percent increase. And this chart compares the numbers to the previous studies. And again, you can see the 2007 levels, which were higher. And then now, we are between the 2007 and 2011 levels. So in terms of the single-family land use, basically, demand stayed relatively stable. Cost per student increased compared to 2011 study. So the effect on the final fee, that's an increase. Credit also increased, but it did not make up for the increase in the cost. So cost kind of dominated. So then the overall impact fee increased. And then in the case of other land uses, the only difference is demand did not stay stable. It went up more, so compounding the increase. So next three slides, we have a comparison to other jurisdictions that have it. We have their adopted rates listed under single-family rate. And then we have also their calculated rates at 100 percent. And you'll see the study date, as well as the adoption percentage. So the adopted rates range anywhere from, I think, $1,200 going all the way to $10,000 in Osceola County. And then the calculated fees are going up all the way to $15,000, you know, depending on which county you're in. And in terms of next steps, we are here today to get your input. And then there will be another meeting for the direction from the school board. And an ordinance update also will be conducted around the same time. And then we'll have the advisory group meetings finalized, and then presentations to committees, and then the BOCC workshop, public hearing. After the, after the adoption, if the figure is going up, there is a 90-day notice period. So it doesn't become effective until 90 days after the adoption. And this is, again, the schedule that I showed in the beginning, just to give you a sense where everything is. With that, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Before we go, board members, before I go to questions, does anybody here from the public intend to speak today or would like to speak? No? Okay. We all love your accent. That's not, everybody was saying, wow, is it European?
Somewhere.
Okay. That was a great answer. None of your business.
No.
All right. I'll lead off, and I'm going to go to Mrs. Gordon. I just had some technical questions. And some of these just because sometimes I struggle to make sense of all this. On slide 26, and you don't have to go back through there unless you want to. You can look on your hard copy. But I understand the row of vacant land sales and the value per acre and the average in range. What is, what is vacant land values?
That's the vacant land that's not necessarily sold, but it's vacant, and property appraiser puts a value for it. So if you pull a record, that happens to be vacant. It may have been lost, sold five years ago, 10 years ago. But property appraiser says its value today is X.
Okay.
That's the value of all the acreages just sitting there, and they're probably saying, this is what it's worth. It's not actively being sold. So the biggest difference is you've got a wide range of vacant land just sitting there that's valued by the property appraiser. And that's the value of all vacant land versus the land that's being sold is on the average selling for about $100,000 an acre.
Okay. Well, I was just struck by the disparity there, and that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, we find that the value estimates tend to be more conservative by the property appraiser until they are sold, and then there's more data.
Okay. I tell myself every time I'm trying to figure out what my house is worth that the property appraiser doesn't know what he's talking about. Got to be worth more than what he says. You know, just as, for my, I mean, obviously, it's too late for this at this point, but I personally would have found it very helpful, I don't know if you're still going to present to the county commission, to see comparisons between 2007 and 2015. In other words, throughout the presentation, you have the 7-11 comparison, which shows a dramatic drop. And you have the 11-15 comparison, which shows a somewhat dramatic rise. But I'm sitting here, as you go through it, trying to extrapolate what the percentage is, 7 to 15, because that gives me a more accurate idea of where we are compared to where we were at the peak. It was.
It was, it, towards the end, it was. Maybe right up front.
But it wasn't, and a lot of the ones in the front.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to ask, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gordon. On slide thirty-four, is my assumption that other revenues, that column, that's impact fees primarily? Or is that another source of revenue that I'm not aware of? Shows capital improvement credit per student, shows the ad valorem or the one-and-a-half mill.
That is not, non-impact fee other revenues. So it could be some state contributions. It could be, I think, like interest or some sale of property, any kind of miscellaneous smaller revenues.
Grants. Sometimes you'll get grants, and we, we've got to be very careful if you, on the average, you get some type of grant every three years, and you get grants because of existing people and existing development. So it's any revenue that's coming in other than those three types that we identify.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I asked, because I was trying to figure that out. Ms. Rodriguez, you may know, if they don't know, our, of our total pie right now, about what percent is impact fees? The last time I looked, it was about eleven percent. Is that still?
Capital.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you know? You and I were just talking about this. Of our total percent, what, what percent is impact fees? Of our capital revenue for both relief school construction and renovations?
Capacity expansion is fifty or so. When we look at...
Okay. It's, it's, I can find out later. I just was intellectually curious. Not a big deal. I'll find out later. I only know because, you know, frankly, when we were renewing the sales tax, it came up a lot, and I know it's climbed dramatically in the last couple of years. At one point, I think it had dropped to only a million or two million per year in collections, but then I know it's gone up dramatically in the last three or four years, so. Do you have an interest in the answer to that, too? I think a number of us, Mr. Collins.
Miss...
Dr. Jarrett, I think a number of us, if somebody could develop that number, would like to know what it is. Because I generally speak to groups and tell them it's only about nine or ten percent today, but I have a feeling I'm off, because it has gone up so much in the last couple of years. I know at one time it had dropped to below five percent, but...
When we look, we, we only looked at the capacity portion, and when we look at the funding for capacity projects, it was about fifty percent. But it doesn't include maintenance, you know, refurnishing, you know, the roofs and that kind of capital, so it was...
What was fifty percent?
Impact fee revenues was making about fifty percent of funding for capacity projects.
Okay. And that's a little bit misleading. I want the audience to know, when we look at our total pie, by that I mean all the money we're expending per year, which is about, depending on the year, three hundred and fifty to five hundred million on renovation, new facilities, construction. I think impact fees only constitutes about nine or ten percent of that.
Okay.
And that's at its peak right now. I think at one time, it had dropped to below four or five percent. That's a different thing than you're saying, I think.
Right, yeah.
That's a whole different topic.
It's insignificant total budget, but it's a pretty good percentage of future capital revenues.
Yeah. And the reason that's important, I think, to the board members and probably, I would think even county commissioners, is there's, as you know, Mr. Tindall, because you do this for a living, there's a giant misperception out there. I would venture, I guess, held by probably ninety-nine percent of the public, that most of our new relief schools are funded by impact fees, when in fact, it's, 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 I don't want to say it's insignificant, but it's such a small percentage of the money we spend building relief schools, and I don't believe any of the money we spend on renovations of our, of our hundred and thirty-some odd schools. So that, from a political perspective, I think I speak for a number of members of the board, that's an important distinction we'd like the public to know, because so many of them think, well, new residents are paying for all these relief schools. That's, that's not the case. All right. Thank you. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like, I know the whole board, would like to thank you for this very nice report, and especially with Julie helping us and going over this. You don't know how much we thank her for really working with us and going through this. Everything you said, she told us. And all our questions pretty much have been answered, but I still, I want to ask again to make sure Julie gave us the right answer. Only kidding, only kidding. Lead the slide thirty-four. With the enrollment constantly increasing, how do you get the average annual enrollment? Just write that down, because I know that you have it at a hundred and eighty-three, two fifty-nine. So by the time you do the study schedule, how will that impact? Do you have to do a rolling annual enrollment? Because our enrollment is increasing, and we don't want to be cut short on anything. So that's one on number thirty-four. If you would go to page ten, I had a question on page, on page ten. You can just come back and answer them at, at a later date or whenever. You don't have to answer them all today for me, okay? Because I got about four or five. Okay, on page ten, okay, I wanted to ask about the school impact fee schedule. What was the reasoning when Julie explained to us about the townhouses? What was their reasoning and rationale for pulling it out? I also noticed that it was done statewide in other counties, and I looked at what was happening with other counties, and it kind of shocked me, because all of the surrounding counties, Lake Sump to Seminole, they appear to be higher than ours, and I was trying to pull it out on the last couple of slides. So that's another question I'd like to know there. And then on page, where am I? One, two, three, forty-two. I think that was on page forty, well, go to forty, on forty, page forty. Okay, the age distribution. Why are they, I did not understand just five-year intervals. You know, when you bring it back to us, so if you could just clear that up for me a little bit with the five-year, when it did the age distribution for Orange County versus the state of Florida. You know, why were they using that? I thought, one year, we used a different year interval, but maybe I'm wrong, and it might have been five. Okay. And then forty-two, if you could write that down. Okay, forty, did I get forty-two? I think that dealt with the townhouses. Okay? And why they pulled that out, which is good, and I understand it after Julie did explain it, but I just wanted some rationale now for the public. Okay, and forty-four. Okay, the, okay, yes. Now, the calculated school impact fee. I think all of these dealt with the townhouses and, and how they came about with the impact fee and what the charge, because I still thought the mobile homes were paying an arm and a leg. And did they look at that? Did they consider it, especially in the time, you know, where people struggling so now in the mobile homes, and then they're getting all blown away, not all of them. But I mean, that's a lot of money to pay, and then your house is really not anchored down or anything like that. That's a lot of money to be paying, you know, for impact fees for something that is not stable, but I just didn't know they had a rationale for it. And then the last one, on fifty-two, I just needed to know, I know, do you have any idea when that, our final approval, and you get directions from us, around what month will that take place? And then I wanted to know when the advisory group goes back and you review the final estimate, will there be a way that you could get what your final estimates are back to us, either through an email or through a PowerPoint of this sort? And then the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning and Zoning Commission, how can you get this information to them so it would not be Greek, that they have never heard it before? How can you sit down with the Planning and Zoning Commission so that they will be able to prevent, present their finding to the Board of County Commissioners, and we don't have to go through a tug-of-war? That it'll be a clean slate? I, I think that's what we need, because they would have to review the findings. And then our school board recognition, recommendation. It just looked like they, you know, it ought not to be when we do the planning and zoning, they ought to know that this is coming, and it's coming from the school board, and we need it, and we need it within a time period. I know you don't have the time period there, but the quicker we get one, the quicker it will be good for the county commissioners and the Planning and Zoning Commission. We would want the Planning and Zoning Commission to push this for us, and should we be able to contact our county commissioners to let them know that this is coming and how we see it as so important for our district? So those are the questions. You don't have to answer them all today. Okay? You could, you know, you can just get with Julie, and Julie will get with me like we normally do, and she can give me the answer. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Gould.
This is an excellent study. Thank you. One of the things that I was particularly concerned about from an economic standpoint is our competitiveness and not ever hurting our growth in the, in the county. And I was pleased to see that we were not necessarily exceeding growth counties that immediately border us, so that we wouldn't be, you know, making people jump county lines as happened in the past when some things changed. So that was one good thing that, that I saw, and thank you for that comparison. It's really helpful to, to see where we position. And it looks like we still have some, some room, actually, so that we're not the highest county. The townhouse breakout, I, I think that not only in this, but in starting to track that separately in a lot of comparables is very helpful as we look not only at capital builds, but rezoning and things, and explaining it to the public. Because I know that I've had a lot of confusion with all the growth on the west side of town about where are all these kids coming from, and you look at that generation rate, and that, when it's blended into that multifamily number, really influences it. So that's just another great tool, so, so I appreciate that. And as the chairman pointed out, the distinction on the amount of money that helps to build our new schools and relief schools, and really getting that calculation and some of those other calculations clear is important, because the perception in my community is that we should be able to speed it up, because we've collected all these impact fees, and it must pay for everything that we do. So, and I think that's also an important distinction when you take it to our fellow legislative bodies and commissioners, because I think there's even confusion, because they get so much information from so many sides. Commissioner Boyd's pretty clear on it at this point, but it took us a while of figuring it all out. And I think reminding people on how these things are calculated and where the true impact and how fast we can go is important. The, the costs that are out there are concerning. How often will we, are we scheduled to come back and review this? Because I think we are in a pretty dynamic cost situation right now with all the changes that are happening in the come, in the economy, and commodities are going low, but labor is going high, and, and I think there's some challenges that could hit the bottom line of these numbers that your, your baselines are based off of.
So a couple of, pardon me, there's a couple of things, Ms. Gould. The current ordinance requires us to revisit this issue every four years. Within that provision, though, there is the ability for the school board staff to do a quick look over at the construction costs and analyze this data on a yearly basis, and if we see fit, we could call for another impact fee study to get done. The other option you would have is to possibly do a recommendation for an escalator within the ordinance, which we, we had in the two thousand and seven ordinance, which automatically had an escalator for, I think it was three percent a year?
I think so.
Three percent a year.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. Again, just like everyone else has had, you know, a very thorough report and complex. I, I, it makes sense to me. But I did want to find and ask you, which were the areas that probably were the point of either contention or discussion, just to be prepared, within the committee? Which areas took a little bit longer to come to, to come to consensus with the group? Because that's what I feel, this is coming from the committee, there's consensus, but were there any areas that might not have been easy to arrive? Any conclusions that were, arrived? Just, just to get a little heads up.
The committee hasn't voted on the final numbers yet. They have one more meeting. I think the part they voted was the student generation rates. They agreed with the new rates, and they voted to separate the townhouses, have their own category. I think we provided the rest of the cost and credit information last meeting, and they had some questions, so we're going to bring back answers February eleventh, and I think that's when they will vote, unless something happens and if they need another meeting.
Okay.
So I think my guess is cost is probably the, the number that everybody is trying to get comfortable with.
The cost per?
Per, per square foot, land cost.
Okay.
Those two are the main...
Because there were a lot of cost per lined out, you know, the, if it's the final cost per student, then we've got a little bit of action to look forward to. But was it any, you know, cost per?
We, we were discussing cost per square foot, because we have historical costs and then a very high new bid, what's a good place to be. So I think they, that's when I think they asked for a couple more schools that are just being finalized, and we got that data, so we're going to provide that next meeting. Similarly, land values, we were missing some of the more recent purchases, so we're going to add these and give that. You already now have it, because, sort of, because we had some time to look at in between that meeting and today.
Could we put the graphic up there that's got the long-term, shows the rise and the fall?
You have a better way to do it.
And I guess this is a general conversation to answer that in general, both, I, I think for both land values and construction costs.
Yeah.
And the conversation goes like this. If you look at that graphic, starting in about two thousand three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you look at that time period all the way to nine, we've been doing this since, like, the eighties, and you can see how nice it was from ninety-five to two thousand three. And so cost, and if you look at your land values and your taxes, they did the same thing. So, so land values did this, and construction costs did this. And so since about oh-nine, the whole discussion about construction costs and land costs has been different than we've ever experienced before. And so that's, that's very common for us to experience this conversation with them. And that's one way we drew that line. If you see that trend line, if we hadn't had that, that absolute peak and that absolute crash, you'd have seen the long-term trend line, which I think is like three or four percent. And so that's, that's probably the most conversation, is about what we're trying to do is be reasonable and project the next four or five years of land and construction costs. And it's our opinion, that trend line is probably the most solid discussion line, and if you'll see where we're coming, we're coming a little bit below that in our estimates, and so that's probably the most conversation is about, and it's been this way for the last five years. Are you still using these accelerated costs? Are you using the, you know, the reduced costs, and then now it's coming up? So I think, to summarize it, that's, that the lengthy conversation has been land and construction, looks like that, and we're trying to pick a very reasonable business number for them to agree to, and that's, that's been the, the conversation, is can we come up with a reasonable business number? If you were a business person, you would bet this number's right, both in land and, and, and construction costs. And so that's, I, I'm trying to summarize, I think that's the lengthy conversation.
No, I appreciate that. And it was mentioned, I know during the presentation, that that was the difficult part. So I just wanted to, out of all of this, it's very complex, so.
And that's very common now. And I'll mention really quickly that we were, we started indexing several years ago, and it was very healthy, and development community liked it. But if you look at oh-seven to, to eight, nine, ten, indexing become not very useful, and then we had the crash. And what we're saying now is that probably, from what we're seeing in the edging up towards that support line, that moving forward, indexing rather than waiting four years, might be a reasonable conversation. But you can see from oh-seven to twenty thirteen, if you were trying to just estimate indexing, it, it wasn't very valuable. So a lot of our communities, about oh-six, oh-seven, stopped indexing, but I think they're now starting to, a conversation about, let's not wait four years. Let's either re-estimate costs or look at these indexes to where we don't have a big jump in that, in when we go to do the update.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Cadle.
Well, and to tag on to that, when we go back to oh-seven, when we were doing this, we knew it was real, it was really, really high at that time. And since we have a formula now, and we have hard costs and we can track it, it makes sense to me to not wait for four years, because something might happen, and we may be too high, but on the reverse side... But on the reverse side of it, at the rate we're going right now, it's going to be really hard to build at this price in another year just because of the labor cost. So I think it, rather than putting an arbitrary escalator on it that we don't know, I would love to see us just be able to plop the numbers into the formula since we've agreed on the formula and say, here's where we are today. I really like the idea of the townhouses staying, you know, being separate. I know in looking where students are coming from, that more and more young families are choosing townhouses to live in and it's kind of that new urbanism. And so, I think, you know, we need to watch it, but I think, I think it's a step in the right direction. So hats off to all of you. You've worked really, really hard. You've come up with some good suggestions and thank you.
I'd queue back up again. Mr. Rodriguez, I just, ultimately, the way this works is we approve it and then it goes to the county commission for them to make the ultimate decision. Is that the statutory scheme for how impact fees are adopted?
I'm going to turn to Ms. Fernandez and she's our resident expert on that.
Once you, once you get the recommendations in from the committee, we would come back and revisit those recommendations with you. It would be in the form of a resolution that you would adopt. And then from there, it would go back to the county for their normal course of, process of reviewing ordinances. If they adopt the ordinance with a higher fee, then that fee would not take effect for another 90 days after the date of adoption of the ordinance.
So the reason I ask is I just want to make sure I'm clear that the ultimate decision of what level of impact fee to adopt, which I know from statute has to be methodology-based, which is why we're using Tindall Oliver. But that's ultimately a decision of the county commission whether they go higher or lower.
I mean, I couldn't see them going higher since the data wouldn't support it at this point. But, I mean, I could envision somebody coming and making, maybe making a request that it be a slow rise. In other words, you know, wait six months for it to go up another $1,000 or whatnot. So they would maybe fight for it to be tiered so that we're not jumping that 28%, 38% right now. And that certainly, they would be able to entertain that notion, if you will.
But it has to be methodology-based?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So when you extrapolate construction costs, that's governed by some form of statute? Is that correct? Or some form of methodology? You just can't say, hey, you know what? 99 economists disagree with me, but I personally.
Right now.
Joe Blow, I think the construction costs are going to go up.
The law is very clear that you can't adopt anything that's not supported by empirical data.
Okay. That's what I thought. Well, you know, it's, one other thing I'd like to, and Ms. Fernandez, I'm sort of looking at you for this because it's really not Tindall Oliver's responsibility, I don't think. But I just want to make sure that our impact fee study committee, most of whom I don't believe are subject matter experts in this area, their community volunteers are. Another point I make a lot of times publicly is we're only looking at the school impact fee, correct here? So that's not the total impact fee on construction.
That's correct.
Correct. And the total impact fee on construction today for a single-family home is around, what, $11,000, $12,000 when you add in transportation impact fees and other infrastructure impact fees?
I'm not sure what those fees are, but we do have people from the county here that could tell you.
Okay, well, I don't need to know. I just want to make sure because, you know, there's some community leaders on that group and opinion leaders that, that we all understand, we're talking impact fees, this study, this is just a school component. It's not the non-school component. And I also want to ask Dr. Jar, you through the superintendent, for me personally, and I suspect maybe for one or two other members of this board, the percentage of the total, I want to make sure I'm clear about this for Mr. Morris and Mr. Collins and their staffs, what I would like to know, and I'd frankly like the impact fee study committee to know it as well, just so they know it when they're out there in the public talking, is the percentage of our total annual construction budget that is impact fee as opposed to capital improvement millage, or what I call capital improvement millage, whatever it's called today, and sales tax revenue. And then if you can break it out into a separate silo, the percentage of the revenue that we spend on an annual basis the last year or two or three on relief school construction that is impact fee is based as well. And I'm asking for that because, you know, I don't mean to put you all in the middle of the politics of it, but there's a fair amount of skepticism sometimes with the numbers that we float out there on what percent is impact fee. And I will, I will confess, it's been a little bit of a moving target even for me on what percentage it is. You know, I thought at one time it was a lot lower than I've come to learn recently. It may be a lot higher. You know, the last thing I'm going to say, and this is only me, Phil Salvo, let a member of the school board talk, and this is not a position of our board, but I do want to make clear, and forgive me, I don't mean to make you suffer through my political speech, Mr. Tindall and your colleagues, but I don't like impact fees. I never have. I think it is an incredibly regressive tax. I think it is probably the most regressive tax in the state of Florida. And I know we're stuck with it and we have no control over it. And we're stuck with it because it is the statutory scheme of the state of Florida to put the onus on the backs of home buyers of new home construction or town home construction or condominium construction. Because, you know, one thing that drives me nuts sometimes is people say, well, developers pay, developers don't pay anything. I've never met anything in my life that a developer pays. Developers pass it through to the purchaser. And the other thing that drives me nuts is when people say, well, it's only $10,000 or $11,000 or $12,000. That's a drop in the bucket. Well, to be very frank, you know, my wife and I aren't particularly high-income, but if we go purchase a house that's $600,000, $700,000, $800,000 new construction, it is a small percentage. But I remember being 25, 28, 30 years old and buying that first starter home. I don't even know what those go for today. But, you know, when you're trying to qualify for that $120,000 mortgage or that $150,000 mortgage, or you're a Disney worker, or you're a Universal worker and you're trying to buy a townhome so you own rather than rent and you're trying to qualify for a $90,000, $100,000 loan, that $10,000 to $12,000 very often makes a difference between qualifying for a mortgage or not qualifying for it. Which is why, a lot of folks, I guess because of my background, and I think everybody on this board knows what the word regressive tax means. When I'm talking to the audience, that means it hits low-income people and first-time home buyers and lower-income folks trying to qualify for a mortgage a lot harder than it hits higher-income people. So I'm only making that little speech. I didn't come in here today intending to make that. But I, for one, don't want to see us err on the higher side because I think that adversely impacts lower-income populations. Ms. Gordon.
I really don't want to leave today without, I'm looking at that study schedule and it kind of scares me. And the reason why it scares me, I don't, I would like to know your plan before leaving today on how you plan to get the information across to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, Mr. Tindall, I really thank you firm and, and what you all have brought to us today, this is very, very good. But I'm concerned because you got to do the work session and you need to do the final approval. And you have a February date and you have a March date. We've been through these before and I know how they can get very sticky in trying to get the county commissioner or the zoning commission together. And then you have a time in there where you have the advisory group meeting back together with their sixth meeting. But within that time limit, so you're looking at either March for the school board meeting and March for the Board of County Commission meeting. It can't be, I mean, April is right there for the advisory. So are you really giving yourselves enough time and the board enough time? I'm just a little concerned. And then, when is the final date? Because normally we do this, Julie, and I think we do it in May, when it comes back to this board for the adoption. I don't know, we did it once in June? I think we did it in June. I kind of need to know, I'm just left, this is a tight schedule and you do have the advisory group trying to meet and review their final estimates and then get together and review their final report. Do you have any idea? Did that come up in your discussion group?
One thing, the last advisory group meeting is scheduled sort of tentatively. They wanted to have a date while they were all together. But I think that's, can be moved if needed. So it's not very concrete. The advisory group will make their recommendation, you know, if all goes well, February 11th. And that meeting, that very last meeting is, they want to see the very final report that's going to go to adoption hearing. So it's not so much to give a approval. If there are many things change in between, it may turn into that. But if not, it's more of a one-last-look type of meeting.
And then it comes to us. So when you all do that, when are you looking at it coming back to the school board for the public hearing?
I think after the planning and zoning adoption, we're going to look at coming back to the school board. Probably, I think there's only one meeting in March, so probably the first meeting in April.
Well, wouldn't, no, the planning and zoning you gave us must meet with the, must get it to the Board of County Commissioners. And there's no dates slated for that?
Right. Because it's tentative right now because we just, we need to kind of get the dates figured out. But it would come to the school board first. The school board would adopt the resolution first and then that resolution would be sent to the BCC.
Right.
For their approval.
Okay.
And so, we need to kind of vet the March dates and see what's available.
So how?
There's a chance it'll go into April.
Right. So are, how are you getting the information to them? Because they do, even with the last one, they act like, you know, they didn't get it in time on some of them, didn't get it on the committee. And I think they were in the middle of changing, you know, and reassigning committee members. So I really, I've served on a couple of the county boards, so I do know that they, members change within those committees. So I'm trying to see how we, as a board, can keep up with the planning and zoning new members if they come on. And I know they take some off, their time is up, and then others come on. And the Board, and the Board of County Commissioners, that's their workshop, how important it is. Some of our commissioners say that they don't get it in time and they call us. So should we say something to them after this workshop? Would that help or what?
Well, we, this is a joint effort with Orange County, so Orange County staff is heavily involved in the study. I think they're going to be responsible for briefing their commissioners.
Getting it to, getting it to the county staff.
Yeah.
So that the county staff could get it to planning and zoning.
Right.
And then planning and zoning get it to the commissioners.
Right.
Okay, I'm trying to tell you, don't wait till the last minute. Because if they don't like the figures, like, you know, what Ms. Flynn was talking about, I mean, you know, we can be in for.
Yeah. We'll follow up with county staff to see what their schedule is for briefing everybody and we can let you know.
All righty. Thank you so very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Well, that's it for this presentation, Ms. Salvo, Ms. Fernandez. Thank you, Mr. Tindall. And Ms. Cap, is it? Thank you for this presentation. And Mr. Murphy, welcome. Joined by another member of the advisory group. And two young Mr. Murphys, it looks like. And with that, we're going to pause and let you all file out if you'd like unless you want to stick through the update on how we're using our impact fees. It's up to you all. All right.
Okay, so, should I, do you want me to start now?
Give him one second.
All right, thank you.
See you, Sean. See you, Dottie.
Thank you, Dottie.
Christine, thank you.
All right. Ms. Salvo.
Okay, so, I just wanted to give you all a quick update as we've been doing every year around this time, just letting you know what we're collecting in terms of revenue from the capacity enhancement program and the concurrency programs. And this is just three slides. And the first slide is showing what has been, the number of CEAs and concurrency mitigation agreements that have been executed. And what I did here is I combined fiscal year 2014 and 15 with fiscal year 2015, '16 year-to-date. So it's about a year and a half worth of work. So on this table, the first column is the project ID. That's the CEA or CMA number that we often refer to. The next column is the project name. And then the third column is the mitigation pledged. So that's the proportionate share or the capital contribution contained in each agreement showing how much money above and beyond the impact fee that the applicant is committing to pay. The next column is the affected schools. Those are the schools that are having the capacity issue and that's where the money will be applied once it's collected. And then the final column is what we're projecting in prepaid impact fees. That number is based on the current impact fee schedule. So the single-family rate of $6,525 per unit and the multifamily rate, which includes townhomes, of $3,921 per unit. So as you can see, in the last year and a half, the mitigation that's been pledged is just shy of $5 million. And the total prepaid impact fees pledged is about $32.5 million. Okay, and the next slide is what we collected in the current fiscal year. So this is about six months into the fiscal year. So again, we have the project ID and the project name. And then the third column is the mitigation amount received. And so, so far this year, in the last six months, we've received just shy of $1 million. And then the next column is the affected schools. That shows where the money is going to help each school. And then the final column is the prepaid impact fees received. So as you know, the agreements have a component which requires applicants to prepay their impact fees. If you're not entering into a CEA with the school board, you would just pay your impact fees at the counter when you pull your building permit. So on a couple of these projects, they've paid their mitigation and they've prepaid some impact fees. And that's just under $10 million. And then the final slide is what we collected in fiscal year 2014, '15. So I showed you, last year at this time, I showed you maybe half of this slide. So this is the completed fiscal year numbers. And we collected about 1.7 in mitigation and just under $30 million in prepaid impact fees. And again, that's just prepaid. That doesn't include what we receive from just, you know, straight building permits. So that number is quite a bit higher. And with that, I can entertain any questions.
Well, I'll lead off with an incredibly ignorant question, but can you remind me for about the millionth time, Ms. Salvo? I know you get tired of having to educate me time and again on this stuff. I may not be alone up here, though. The difference between mitigation and a prepaid impact fee, is a prepaid impact fees or a CEA fees or a CMA?
Yeah. In a CEA or a concurrency agreement, you have your prepaid impact fees, which are the impact fees that would be due.
Okay.
You're going to pay them early at the time of your plat, so that we can collect the money in large chunks. The mitigation is an additional amount due. Really, what it is, it's, when Tindall Oliver was showing you the formula for how we calculate impact fees, there's that credit amount that's deducted from the total cost. We use that number to calculate our mitigation. And so, what we're trying to do is get to that total cost per student station. So the mitigation is based on that number. And that's above and beyond the impact fee. That's the additional contribution that they have to pay to help our schools that are overcrowded at the time of the development.
And I'm looking at Ms. Fernandez because she's bemused. She's only explained this to me about 12 times. But first of all, I want to thank you because we started asking, for those of you all in the audience, we started asking Mr. Collins and Ms. Salvo and Ms. Fernandez to do this for us a couple of years ago. I find it incredibly educational to see where the money's coming from and what schools it's dedicated to, usually for the construction of a relief school, although we have some outliers like University High School where it's not that simple. But for the most part, I thank you for doing this. And before I turn it over to Ms. Gould, he left, but I do want to thank Mr. Morris and his staff for sharpening their pencils and driving down our cost for our schools. I think they're doing about as good as they can do in that area. Ms. Gould.
This prompted a question that actually pertains to your other presentation. In the committee discussion, was there a change on the payment schedule discussed at all for the developers on any of the timing or breaking it? Not, and no offense to our larger builders and developers, but I know more the local builders, that has been a question or a request that they've had is about spreading the payment schedules out a little more.
There was the representative from GOBA that brought up that issue. However, the committee, that's not their role. Their role is to look at the impact fee itself and to figure out if we have the data to support what we're charging. That is an issue that...
I would like that to be looked at, and would request some analysis and options on, so that it doesn't hurt our timing in any way, and we get what we need, but may be at least considered, so that we know that, what the options would be. Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think mine is just giving praises here. And you said it took you a while. I think it took me 15 years. But this, I think this is just awesome, the layout of the new CEAs and the CMAs, the, I mean, this is unbelievable how you've executed it. We normally have to come in, go in a room, pull out all of the programs, and look at it, and get all the maps, and say, how do we know? I think, I think that those that are involved feel a little bit more good about it, because we just had stacks and stacks of stuff over the years. So it's been, this is just excellent. And this is the best and the most improved layout. It deserves an A+. I am not kidding. Mitigation collected that we can see what has been paid, what has been prepaid, what is projected, what is pledged. I think this is the best report. I don't know how you did it. And like Bill said, we have asked, the chairman has stated, we've asked you all to try to get this together, because when he took over, there were just stacks and stacks laying in the office. And I don't want to say you're in Tyrone's office, but it was just everywhere. But I really want to thank you all, Dr. McGowan, all the work that you all have done, and helping to educate us. But this is, as I stated, I had to write it down, the most improved layout on mitigation that I've ever seen. And I've never seen one like this in any school district. So you might want to take this as a best practice and share with your colleagues. So I thank the team. You guys are really awesome and working hard through this. Dr. McGowan, and Tyrone, and Eileen, and Julie, you have been on this through all the children you've had. You were able, I just think it's so wonderful. But I thank you, Bill, and see, for you to say you're understanding it, I just, I'm just chuckling because I could read it and have fun with it, because I go to every one of them. I don't miss any, because somebody always called, and then asked, and I don't always have to want to call Julie. So I haven't missed one since I've been on this board, in anybody's district. So I'm pretty much up on it, and I just love it. So thank you so very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Moore.
Julie, my question, I've probably asked you several times before, too, so I have to be specific to my district. I have a question. It's on page two, and I'm looking at Avion Point. And it is to make a point in terms of a situation that could occur over and over. So what I see on here is that when it says affected schools, Apopka Elementary School was not listed at the time, and now, and now we're over capacity. The school just opened in August. So the first question is if you can answer how this is calculated, with the timing, and that project's not even come out of the ground yet. So by the time they do, there's absolutely no room at that school. And then the second part of that question is where there's a proposal right now that the board is voting on Tuesday, a week from today, the next board meeting, to move Avion Point to Zellwood, which is already overcrowded, too. And that was piggybacked on the fact that there was no more capacity at Apopka. So I just, I'm wanting to understand a timeline and how you factor in all these unique situations.
So with any project, we do the analysis and calculate the mitigation based on when they apply. So I'm not sure about Avion Point, because that's one of Tyrone's projects, but I'm assuming they applied at a time where maybe there was a little bit of capacity at the elementary school. But their mitigation in their CEA is based on their time of application. The school board gets two opportunities to look at all the projects, because we also have concurrency. So it comes in for a CEA, and then it comes back for concurrency. So we'll have another opportunity to review the project. Concurrenty is reviewed, you know, like within six to eight months of, before a project's actually going to get built. So we are able to look at it very close to the time it's projected to impact the schools.
Right. So I'm just trying to think, because we're moving a few out of an overcrowded school, but everything's crowded there, so it probably, I wouldn't assume it would impact the fee because it's one crowded zone to the next.
Probably.
Would it change?
It could.
But I do understand if the fee changes based on each level, elementary, middle, and high school, and their capacity, correct?
It's one fee per housing unit. So they'll pay whatever mitigation is calculated at the time of concurrency. If it's more, they'll end up paying the delta between what was in their CEA and what's in concurrency. Also, they'll pay whatever impact fee is in effect at the time of, when they go forward. So if they're pulling a building permit and the impact fee has gone up, they'll pay that higher impact fee, not the impact fee reflected in their agreement.
To be clear then, on Avion Point, then it doesn't really matter, because the elementary's not listed, the fee doesn't change for the developer?
When they go through concurrency, we will look at it again, and if, this time, if the elementary school is an issue, when they go forward with the concurrency, we may do another agreement with them to address the elementary school. So the fee could change.
Okay. So it could go up with all three levels having a capacity issue?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate, too, the list, having it right before us of the impact fees. But I think when we were doing this, what I wanted to see a little bit more was how it was being spent. Because that's, when you're in a high-growth area and you see impact fees being collected, a lot of times constituents say, well, how's that going to help us now? So is there a way that we can say that this impact fee went to the relief school, or to build a wing or portables? So I think that's the next step that I'd like to see on this chart.
And as you know, the impact fees go into a countywide fund. So the way it gets, the way the actual individual impact fees get distributed is, it's hard to really pin down which impact fee goes to which improvement, but the mitigation goes to the specific school. So if there's going to be a...
Mitigation, that's what I meant. This, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize. The mitigation pledged, for this chart that we're talking about right now.
Right. So if there's a relief school, the mitigation's going to go into that fund for the relief school. If there's a renovation coming up that's going to add capacity, the mitigation will go toward that. So the next time we do this, we can try to pin it down a little bit more and see, like, if that improvement's actually occurred.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And it'd be helpful to the residents of those high-growth areas. Because, and I know, there's, I'm not the only board member up here, but we'll get a, and this is where Mr. Chair, when you talk about impact fees, when you live in an area where there's a lot of high-growth, existing residents feel that impact because of, and the ones coming in at the schools, and they're wanting to see, you know, why? Why are you, you know, approving more growth when our schools are overcrowded, that type of thing? So it, you know, it's a community-type problem, and those impact fees and the mitigation fees help all students, whether they're coming into it from a new house or an existing house. It really helps to keep our student stations where they need to be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Gould.
I actually had something similar to what Ms. Flynn was asking. I would like to see not the project to the relief school, et cetera, but how that money was factored into the budgets, and then also what we're projecting right now for any schools that are in the 10-year plan. I would like that for my area before the next time we do this, because I'm constantly having these conversations. And to be able to have that information at my fingertips would be, give me the ability to educate the community a little bit better than I think I'm doing it right now. So if I could get that, that would be great. And you could break it out by the mitigation and the impact fees. And again, not by project and how it goes, but just the impact to that bottom line of that budget, or the estimated, what we think will make up that budget, whether it's a relief school or those other things to help with capacity issues.
Ms. Moore.
You can see the high-growth area board members are chiming in. So I'm going to say, yes, absolutely, to their point. I was talking about Avion Point, and there's that $733,000 figure, and I have to go out in the committee and say, oh, it's going to be 10 years till you have your school. That is very, very difficult for us. And I think the biggest piece of it is, and I think I've talked to Mr. Collins about that, is the land banking piece. It's even more difficult to say, okay, we're taking in these fees, and I still don't have a piece of land, and I know I'm at 100% overcapacity, I don't have the land, but I still have to wait. So I don't think there's always the link for the community, and that's what you're hearing us say, between those fees being paid by the developers and then the relief coming. It just doesn't seem to have a direct link. So the better that we could make that work, especially on the land banking, and I think would give some of them comfort.
All right. Well, Ms. Moore, thank you. That's a good ending point. And board members, thank you. Dr. Jar, do you have anything to ask, add before I adjourn? All right. Mr. Tindal, Ms. Capes, thank you so much for your presentation. Ms. Salvo, Ms. Fernandez, thank you again. And thank you again to our advisory committee members and to our county partners. Thank you all for being such great advocates for our schools. With that, we are adjourned. Okay.